Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Citizens input? Hearing none, we'll move on to administration. And I see we have the fire chief here tonight, so Chief, you're on the floor.
Recording in progress.
You may need some crowd control.
Bob, you want to hit the button?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I will start with, sorry, with the Board, the monthly review. All right, in January, the Department responded to 66 calls for service. That does not include burn permits and plan and life safety reviews. January 25 was one of the busiest months on record in many years. The incidents were broken down. Building fires or other fires, two. EMS, MVAs, 33. Power lines, excuse me, LPG gas leaks, four. CO alarms, two. Public assists, one. Mutual aid, two. Three mutual aids and canceled en route. Two smoke scares. Five unintentional alarms, either CO or fire alarms, and 12 special incidents. Just to highlight some of the calls, January 8th, the Department received automatic aid from our partners for a reported CO alarm on Pond Street. On January 11th, A1 did an ALS transport to exit a hospital. On January 12th, the Department received mutual aid again from our partners for reported smoke in the basement on Fernwood. On the 14th, we received mutual aid for fire alarm sounding in a multi-unit apartment complex on South Main Street. On the 16th, the Department received, which was the Board of Selectmen's meeting, I believe it was, received automatic aid from, I'll get it, from the town of Plastow and the town of Kingston for propane leak in a commercial building. On the 20th, the Department received mutual aid for reported smoke in the basement on Willamine Drive. On the 21st, the Department did, worked with East Kingston, Kingston for ICE rescue training. On Country Pond, on the 21st, Engine 2 responded to the town of Plastow for mutual aid. On the 22nd, A1 responded to East Kingston for motor vehicle accident. On the 25th, we received auto aid again for a CO alarm. On the 27th, same thing for reported CO alarm. On the 28th, the new ambulance was actually put, moved to the front line because A1 went out of service and within one hour, it responded to three calls. One of them was to the town of Plastow for an EMS call on Route 108. On the 28th, Amesbury Fire in the middle of the night came in to assist the Department on an odor investigation. On the 29th, the Department had auto aid for CO alarm. On the 30th, same thing. During the last snowstorm, the Department was fully covered with combination of firefighters and EMS personnel. And the Department continues to do joint fire and EMS training with our mutual aid partners. Just to touch on some other highlights that the Board doesn't have, Sunday, this past Sunday, was the ambulance twos push-in ceremony. It was a big hit, and it's available on YouTube if anybody wants to watch it. I spoke with the contractor that was hired to do the Susterens. The contractor had mentioned that if the Board has any questions, to feel free to reach out to them, but to him, I'm sorry. Hoping the Board does hire the three candidates this evening. We're also receiving, so, a few more applicants, hopefully this month. So we're looking real good to have one firefighter, paramedic, on staff 24/7, starting March 1st. Also, in March, since we'll be taking over EMS transports, just so the Board is aware, we'll be sending out the weekly transports that the Department does to the town's insurance billing company for insurance reimbursement. We're not going to wait like has been done in the past. Also, as a check in balance, I met last week with the Plastow chief and Kingston chief to set up a better automatic aid response for all non-medical incidents. That was a question that was brought up. Starting in March, just in case we don't have enough of the call members coming back, my game plan is to start with internally, and if internally don't work, we're just going to join what the other surrounding towns and cities are doing, automatic. Having, we're going to go to them and they're going to come to us automatically, so there'll be no delay in a fire truck, if needed.
Good.
And again, that's only if the call members don't come back. And what I have done is, like the other towns have done, we've divided the town into two districts, zones, and the dividing line's going to be Highland Street, right on down to Whittier Street, out to West Main. One side's going to be Kingston for automatic, the other side will be Plastow for automatic. The game plan is to make sure the town is covered after March 1st, 100%.
Awesome.
Thanks, Chief.
Very thorough. Do you want to review your new hires?
That's fine. I've submitted a request for three, let me take the captains out, for three new hires. I know I'm going to screw up his name like I did Sunday on a lot of names. The first one is Owen Gazanano. He's actually a pro-board firefighter, one and two, and an EMT. We'd like to hire him. The second individual is John DeMurrus. He is strictly an EMT advanced. He's had his license for many years. And the third would be Brian Parker. He is an EMT basic. Both Brian and John DeMurrus come to the town of Newton, basically via the town of Atkinson. They went to the town of Atkinson. Atkinson actually vetted them, but their roster is full, so they sent them to us. They both work now currently full-time in the city of Manchester for AMR ambulance service, and they work in one of the roughest parts of town, the way it was explained to me. So they have plenty of experience for the town of Newton. So I respectfully ask that the Board hire the three of them.
So you're telling me that we're overqualified?
We will see.
They get to use their skills on a long-term basis. So with that said, Chief, I'd like to hear a motion to appoint these folks?
I'll do it. I move to hire Brian Parker as an EMT basic at the hourly rate of $20 an hour, pending he meets those requirements set forth by the chief.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to hire Owen Graziano as a probationary firefighter, EMT basic, at the hourly rate of $21 an hour, pending he meets the requirements set forth by the chief.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any unanimous? I move to hire John DeMurrus as an EMT advanced at an hourly rate of $21.50, pending he meets the requirements set forth by the chief.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you, Board.
Done, Chief. Awesome. Do you want to move on to the?
Captains?
The captains?
Yes, sir. As I mentioned to the Board, we're restructuring the Department since we're going to be going 24-hour coverage. We posted for the lieutenants who would be interested in moving up the captain with more requirements, one of the requirements for captain. They all met the requirement for lieutenant, and they all met, basically, the requirement for captain. The only difference was captains were required to become fire inspectors, pro-board fire inspectors. And the two that applied for it was Lieutenant Sean Kane and Lieutenant Peter Jana Lunas. So I promoted both Jana Lunas and Kane to the rank of captain.
Well, with that said, I'd like to congratulate those gentlemen on their promotion. And if I could have a motion?
I move to approve Sean Kane, title change to Fire Captain with a new hourly rate of $30 per hour effective next pay period.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
I move to approve Peter?
Jana Lunas.
Jana Lunas.
Jana Lunas, title change to Fire Captain with a new hourly rate of $30 per hour effective next pay period.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you, Board, on their behalf. I will be posting tomorrow for lieutenants, and the procedure for the lieutenants, just so the Board's aware, it'll be posted for two weeks once the candidates apply. I have arranged an oral board, three members that do not have a clue who any member is in the town of Newton, so it's non-bias. That oral board will review the candidates and pick the best candidates for that position.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for the update.
Thanks, Chief.
The 24/7's working okay right now?
There's a lot of open shifts, and that's what we're hoping to fill holes. Right now, we still have Trinity, so I have not been filling open shifts.
Sure.
We're trying, because we don't know if we're going to go through with the fall budget.
Yeah.
So we're trying to save the budget the best we can until March 1st. But March 1st, we should have no problem with new hires to have the 24/7 plus the extended hours the Board voted on at one of their meetings. We should be.
Yeah. Well, it's good that we had that break in period to work out the bugs.
Correct. We should be good.
Chief, would you like to, well, there's one other thing on the agenda here about the purchase. Would you like to review that?
Correct. The Hydro Ram.
Yes.
Yeah.
The frontline, the frontline apparatus has, it's a Hydro Ram, we call it, a rabbit tool, and what it basically does, it does less damage in breaching doors. Doesn't make a difference if it's a steel door or wooden door compared to the old way with an axe, and we ruin your door. Matter of fact, we realized, and this one's on me, we realized when A2, the new ambulance was put in service last week, we actually went out to assist the police department to breach a door, and we realized.
Didn't have the tools.
We didn't have it. It was missing. I didn't even think about it. It's one of those tools that, unless you lock your keys out of your house, or it's a well-being check, we don't use.
So is this going on the ambulance?
It's going on to the brand-new ambulance. Yes, sir.
Awesome. So with that all said and done, like, your motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a Hydro Ram forcible entry tool in the amount of $2,500 payable to Firematic, funds to be expended from the Fire Department account 4220303.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Board.
Awesome. Next on our agenda is the.
Well, we're going to lose our audience.
Thanks. Millions of fans are out there. We'll continue. Transfer station employee rate increases.
Want to talk about them, or you want me to just read them?
I think we just, I believe we've already discussed them, so we're just looking for, looking for some motions.
I move to increase transfer station attendant Frank Bradley hourly pay from $13.09 to $14 an hour effective May 1st, 2024.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
I move to increase transfer station attendant Abigail Wellinger hourly pay from $14.09 to $15.50 effective July 1st, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any unanimous?
I move to increase transfer station attendant manager Jack Kozak hourly rate from $20 an hour to $20.52 effective November 1st, 2024.
Second.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to increase transfer station attendant Steve Quiglietta hourly pay from $16.94 to $18 an hour effective October 1st, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And just so everybody knows, Mr. Chairman, that the reason behind this is that every year, the employees at the transfer station are required to take training, which essentially puts them up higher and higher, higher in the percussion of the scheme of things for the transfer station. And in particular, one is Steve, who has now become a Level 4, which now enables him to be able to open and run the transfer station. So he's another member that we can rely on.
Some good backup there.
To be able to do that. And we brought, some of them were on the lower spectrum of the pay scale, hence that's why they received a little bit more per hour raise because we felt that they were, as a Board, we felt that they were being well-underpaid, and we wanted to bring their salaries up a little bit.
Awesome.
To be somewhat respectable anyways.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. Moving along, we have a resignation from our Recreation Coordinator, which I will read, and this is dated 1/23/25, Town of Newton, New Hampshire, to the Board of Selectmen and members of the Rec Commission. After much consideration, I am resigning from the position as Recreation Coordinator effective immediately. While attempted to perform the position, it's become abundantly clear to me that the responsibilities of this position are a massive undertaking, and I do not have the time to dedicate to creating, orchestrating, and assisting with successful programming and other duties that will be beneficial to the town. The town deserves someone who can focus on the goals of the Recreation Commission and has the time to dedicate to seeing those goals through to fruition. I apologize for any difficulty that may arise from stepping down from the position. I appreciate you giving me the chance to attempt to the position and sharing your vision for the direction you hope to bring the Recreation Department in the future. Sincerely, Caitlin Kate Foucher. Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the resignation of Recreation Coordinator Caitlin Foucher with a thanks and gratitude.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would just like to say, it's a heavy heart, with a heavy heart, that we accept this resignation, because I can say this, that my wife brings my granddaughters to the library, and they have a wonderful time there with Caitlin, and she is so personable with all those kids. She knows their name, you know, like the first time she meets them, the different things that she puts together for them. And I understand that it's with that love and dedication that she does there at the library, why she wants to do what she does. It's just, it's too bad that there wasn't enough time in that day that we couldn't have her on the Rec Commission, because I know that she would be just as wonderful in that role also.
Thank you, Bob.
Well said.
Yeah, the Selectmen will be reposting that position shortly, so that we'll be, you'll be seeing that. Moving along, we have, let's see, the Recreation Ordinance Policy. I'm going to turn that over to Joe Aiello to discuss that.
So the Rec Board updated the ordinances for the town ordinances regarding the Town Beach and Greenie Park to include the new field use agreement. I brought that to the Board of Selectmen to sign and approve to post on the website.
With that said, may I have a motion?
I move to accept the amended Town Parks and Recreation Areas ordinance as approved by Recreation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, moving along, there is a, I'm taking your tax refund. There's a, the assessor recommended the approval of a negative tax bill for 5 Amesbury Road RD, which decreased the first and second tax bill in 2024. Location is for Tax Map 10-5-8, Todd Fitzgerald and Michael Flanagan, in the amount of $3,199.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the issue was, they purchased, it's the old church on Amesbury, and they paid all the back taxes, and the reason for this reimbursement is because they overpaid the taxes that were owed on it. So that's why we are doing this.
Do we have a motion, please?
Yeah, I move to authorize a tax refund in the amount of $3,199 for Tax Map 10-5-8 for year 2024, as recommended by the assessor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Moving along, food pantry donations. There was a couple donations for the food pantry, one for three $10 Market Basket gift cards from Joanne and Scott Magoo, and a $100 donation for Michael Forten. So I'd like to say thank you and accept those on behalf of the food pantry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Moving along to manifests. I'd like to read the following, the treasurer requested that the following transfers be read into the minutes of the meeting, and the transfers made as instructed by the Select Board. The first one is $8,719.72 was transferred from the ambulance account ending in 5060 to the general fund. The second is a transfer of $51,941.8482 from the fire and rescue ending in 4396 to the general fund. The third one is a transfer of $1,089.43 from Recreation to the general fund. The fourth one is stop payment on a check made payable to MHQ, incorporated check number 10040 in the amount of $72,032.43. So with that all said and done, could I have some motions on those?
I'll make a motion to accept the transfers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're going to need one more motion. A motion to accept the stop payment on the check for MHQ. Check number is 10040 in the amount of $72,032.43.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that all said and done, we move to chief manifest.
I move to approve payroll manifest, the amount of $75,949.45 for pay period January 21st, January 12th through 25th, year 2025, with the pay date of January 30th, 2025. Payroll includes $0 in opera costs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
I move to approve payroll manifest, the amount of $10,201.60 for pay period January 28th through February 3rd, 2025, with the pay date of February 6th, 2025. Payroll includes $0 in opera costs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of $56,255.05 with the payment date of January 30th, 2025. Payment includes $27,929.16 to G. Mellow Disposal for townwide disposal services, and $9,892.15 to Health Trust for health insurance coverage.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
I move to approve vendor manifest, the amount of $408.58 with the payment date of January 30th, 2025. Payment includes reimbursement checks in the amount of $66.32 to James Doggett, $52.26 to Roger Hamel, and $190 to Petty Cash.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved.
I have a question on the Petty Cash. Where did that go?
I can check, but I'm not concerned. It's one of two places. It goes back to Petty Cash, or the person who kept it.
Okay. Do we have?
If it's Petty Cash from the planning board, what happens is Mr. Doggett uses the money from the Petty Cash to, when he goes to pay for something, whether it's the.
Certified mailing.
Whether it's the post office, any of those things. And then what happens is that he gets reimbursed from the treasurer out of those different accounts to put the NIPRA accounts for the different people to where he spent that money, and then that money goes back into the Petty Cash so that he can constantly do it, so that there's no lapse for him to have to get it, and then have the treasurer make a check, and then get the check, and then go and take care of business. He's able to.
That's fine. I want to see, we should see documentation of what's, what the Petty Cash started out as, its withdrawals and its credits to it, so we know, keep people, yeah, keep people honest.
We should have them submit, we should ask them to submit perhaps once a month a log or an accounting or a spreadsheet as to what's coming and what's going to. That way there's an accounting of it.
Thank you.
Is that something I can forward, right?
Yes.
I think so.
I'll second that. A log with receipts.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
I move to approve vendor manifest, the amount of $289.02 with the payment date of January 30th, 2025. Payment includes a reimbursement check in the amount of $149.02 for electrical parts for work at the library, and a payroll deduction to the Department of Human and Health Services.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that unanimous?
I move to approve vendor manifest, the amount of $27.15 with the payment date of January 30th, 2025. Payment includes a reimbursement check to Robin Sparks for office supplies.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Quick question on that last one, Robin. Do we not have the credit card, or is there a problem with the credit card again?
Um, no, I just, I had to pick something up, and I just have the credit card.
I just check and make sure the credit card was good. I move to approve vendor manifest, the amount of $44,448 with the payment date of January 30th, 2025. Payment is to Stryker Sales for lift pack, monitor, defibrillator, installation, and accessories.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any unanimous?
I move to approve vendor manifest, the amount of $6,614.23 with the payment date of February 4th, 2025. Payment is to E-LAN Financial Services for townwide credit card purchases.
Do I have a second? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
I move to approve vendor manifest, the amount of $85 with the payment date of February 4th, 2025. Payment is to Kevin Brown for reimbursement to CDL certification exam.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any unanimous?
I move to approve vendor manifest, the amount of $41.42 with the payment date of February 4th, 2025. Payment is to Jack Kozak for reimbursement for supplies.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any unanimous?
I move to approve vendor manifest, the amount of $18,105.67 with the payment date of February 4th, 2025. Payment includes $14,381.31 to Bound Tree Medical for medical accessories, and $160.36 to Home Depot for credit card purchases.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Do I have a motion? Do I approve it? Everyone in favor?
Aye.
A second. Okay, approved. A second, okay, approved.
I move to approve withdrawal of $272 from the Uniform Fire Watch account with the pay date of January 31st, 2025. Payment is to East Coast Emergency Outfitter for fire uniforms and gear.
Second.
Seconding by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
That's approved.
I move to approve the withdrawal of $299 from the Uniform Fire Watch account with the pay date of January 31st, 2025. Payment is to East Coast Emergency Outfitters for uniforms and gear.
Second.
Seconding by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
That's approved.
I move to approve withdrawal of $2,874.75 from the Fire Rescue Ambulance Account with the pay date of January 31st, 2025. Payment is to Greenwood Emergency Vehicles for ambulance equipment.
Second.
Seconding by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I move to approve and accept the public meeting minutes dated January 14th, 2025 as written.
Second.
Seconding by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I move to approve and accept the non-public meeting minutes dated January 14th, 2025 as written.
Second.
Seconding by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I move to approve and accept the public meeting minutes dated January 16th, 2025 as written.
Second.
Seconding by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I move to approve and accept the public meeting minutes dated January 21st, 2025 as written.
Second.
Seconding by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I'm, move to approve and accept the non-public meeting minutes dated January 21st, 2025 as written.
Second.
Seconding by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? And we're coming down to the end. Are there any, uh, new and old business?
There's an announcement.
Bob, anything?
No.
Mike?
No.
Joe?
No.
Okay, uh, the, uh, one of the announcements is town hall will be closed on Monday, February[1723.13]